I was given just a moment for a couple of tardy council members to arrive. But I think what we'll do is go ahead and call a meeting to order. If we could ask everyone to stand for a moment of silence, and then we'll ask councilmember Singer. Early.
Pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Shall we call a roll?
Mr. Bradley?
Here.
Mrs. Butcher-Cromway?
Here.
Mrs. Singer-Erdley?
Here.
Mr. Lesby?
Mrs. Tingle-Sames?
Here.
Mr. Showalter?
Here.
Mrs. Tackett?
Here.
Mr. Thompson?
We have a quorum. Each of you should have a copy of the minutes of our last regularly scheduled meeting of October the 8th in your packet. If you'd like to look those up, any possible corrections or additions.
May I make a motion except the minutes as presented?
Thank you. Motion's been made. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have seconds everywhere. If there's no discussion, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Each of you should have received a copy of our latest check register in your packet. If you can indicate if you received that, please. And now we are to the part of our meeting for public comments. Do I have the sheet, chief? Do I have the sheet?
He did.
I did.
Somewhere. There it is.
Thank you. First, Matt Nunn and Rayshawn Williams.
We are looking to close down Main Street in front of Sancha Public House to host a benefit for the 217 Strong Foundation, co-host with Officer Rayshawn Williams. You have in your packet a sketch of the traffic plan for that day. The idea of the barriers we place in the following locations, at Mulberry Street and the other side of our establishment, those would be the east and west boundaries where the event will take place. The road will then also be closed at Hamilton, where the Chamber of Commerce is right there at Hamilton, and then traffic will be routed through a detour at Hamilton and then at Chambers Avenue. That's the traffic control plan for the day. We'll have, of course, no alcohol beyond these point signs at both the east and the west barriers. Two uniform Georgetown police officers with crews will be there for security.
Good. What I'd like to add to Matt and Rayshawn is since this event is on the same date as our Thriller event later that evening, we've worked real hard to make sure that the two events coordinate with each other. We called upon Laurie Saunders to get all of the parties in a room and make sure that each event complemented the other in terms of its hours, their music, to make sure their announcements wouldn't step on each other's toes. And I think it'll be a nice collaborative event where folks who have been at your event for Deputy Morales can come on down to the Thriller event.
That's our belief as well, and I can give the detail. So, we're going to, we're looking to close the road at 1:00 so we can set up a stage, cornhole boards, all those sorts of things. We'll have a cornhole turnout from 2:00 to 5:00, and then a live auction from 5:00 to 6:00. Throughout the entire period, we'll have music by several bands we have lined up. We'll have two food vendors. One is giving food away, and then the other's going to sell food and then donate all their tips to the charity, to the foundation, and then we're giving 50% of ourselves for the day to the foundation as well. And as you said, it does kind of shoulder with the Thrill to Give Parade. My understanding is they're going to do a dance in honor of Deputy Morales at 6:00 when our event ends, and that'll kick off, kick off that event, which will then move further down west on Main Street.
Sounds good. And I'm going to assume with Rayshawn on board, you've got the coordination with the police department.
Sir.
Right, chief.
I'll make a motion.
I'll second.
Okay. Motion made and seconded. If there are no questions for Matt or Rayshawn, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Good luck with your event.
Appreciate it.
Also related to a similar thing, we have Deputy John Bright and Dylan Cornet from the Sheriff's Office.
It's a great feeling knowing I'm following up with another event. Real quick, November 3rd, I laid all the pictures of the event on the desk. In a company with the Cardone Center and Kentucky Bank, we're actually holding a 217 Strong Festival. It's an all-day event. It's everything Morales likes, car shows, running, bands, food, everything else. So, with that being said, in order to make this event work, we have got to use the land behind the water treatment plant. If you see in the map, the area that's not, you know, drawn on is the water treatment plant. For that to work, that's where Dylan's here. He's hosting the 5K. It's not really a 5K, but it's a run. Close enough. I keep calling it that.
It's got some elevation changes.
It does. Yeah. So, basically, we need to use that bit of the land to complete the run. Yes. Without it, we wouldn't have enough space.
First off, it's great that you're working with Cardone because that was part of the council's intention when they sold Cardone, was that it be preserved for community use as well. City kept the 30 acres that you're referring to behind the tree line that lies down adjacent to the creek. And it lays perfect for this kind of event.
And I was also asked, just, you know, with all the events going on that day, to put the city of Georgetown under the CAECO insurance, and I have a form on that.
I have a copy of that.
You have a copy of that? Okay. That's under there, so you are liable free. It's all on us.
Sounds good to me, Mayor. May I make a motion?
Second.
Thank you. Second. Any questions for the deputies? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Good luck, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Thank you. Let's see. I think we have Tim Schneider, Georgetown Baptist Church.
Tracy, I apologize if I couldn't assist you with your events, but here's a copy of your event. It's my annual presentation to ask for road closure for a block of South Hamilton Street from College Street to Clinton or Jackson, whichever is easiest for the police. But we have our trunk or treat every year. This time, it's on a Sunday instead of on a Wednesday because of Halloween falling on a Wednesday, but it'll be from 5:30 to 7:00 o'clock this coming Sunday, the 28th. And we expect to welcome the community and our neighbors in that area, as well as our church members.
Motion, Mayor.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. I don't think there are too many questions about this. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you very much, Tim. That completes those who have signed in for public comment unless there's someone else in the audience. If not, that gets us to Mayor's comments. I can, all of our guests, I can assure you, this is the council's favorite part of the meeting. Where they get to listen to me update them on some things. But it's real important tonight that we have some special guests with us that I'd like to begin Mayor's comments with. Mr. J.D. Chaney from the Kentucky League of Cities, Representative Philip Prattler here for a very special presentation that is appropriately done before the Georgetown City Council. So, J.D., I'll give you the podium.
Thank you, Mayor, members of council, and distinguished staff. I appreciate you all letting me come down to give an award. We used to do these legislative awards, you all know, at our annual conference. We decided it was better to come to the community where the legislator actually works for you all and works with you all. So, our Board of Directors each year selects several legislators, not several, sometimes it's a short list, sometimes it's a longer list, but selects legislators. And Andrew served on our board for the past four years, haven't you, three or four years? Votes on legislators who either pass legislation that go to the concept of local control and home rule, or on our legislative agenda, or defeat legislation that would take revenues away or otherwise preempt you all from making decisions on behalf of your constituents that you all are elected to serve. This year, we decided, our board decided to bestow an award on you all, State Representative, Representative Philip Pratt. If you all did not keep up with the session last year, most everybody did, more so this session than in previous sessions, but if you didn't keep up with the session, Representative Pratt was instrumental as the chairman of the Economic Development Committee in helping us reform a much-long overdue for reform workers' compensation system as chairman of that committee and principal cosponsor of that bill. In addition, he sponsored legislation to help inner local cooperation between housing authorities, a consistent and avid supporter of separation of the county employees' retirement system from the Kentucky retirement system. As you all know, that is a major priority for us and continues to be a major priority for us, even though we didn't get it accomplished last session. So, we don't have PACs at city government. We don't give report cards to legislators. We don't endorse candidates. But what we can do for those legislators who step out and do things that embrace the concept of home rule, local control, and support city government is recognize them for their work in the legislature and call them a friend of cities. So, join me in congratulating Representative Philip Pratt as a 2018 Friend of Cities. You all all know him very well here. I think he's the same, same person up there in the legislature. He's unburdened by ego, which is, which is a rarity in Frankfurt. He's so easy to work with and approachable. I think you all are very fortunate to have him representing the city of Georgetown in the Kentucky General Assembly.
Let, I know he's going to speak.
You want to do a picture or you want to let him speak?
I'd like for Philip to speak first. And...
Well, thank you for the kind words and thank you for this award. You know, he is right. Frankfurt is an interesting place to go and to work, and I understand how people can lose their way, but without a doubt, I am the same person. I'm the same person at Frankfurt. I'm back in Georgetown. I'm glad to support the cities. I'm glad to support Scott Countyans and make sure we make good legislation that moves the city, county, and the state forward because that's what we're supposed to do, not hinder new business or the people that we represent. And thank you guys very much.
Thank you, Philip.
Can we get a picture?
Would you all like to picture?
Sure.
Get down?
Yeah.
This is the best place. A lot of people.
Wait a minute. Go here, Jack.
She's got the good camera.
Moving the middle, like even between you two some, can you maybe move, that way we've got it a little more disclosed.
Yeah, there you go.
I know, right? I need you between two women. You can't be upset about that.
Martha, Mike.
I'm married up.
Sound like you.
All right, are we ready?
All right, I think we're good.
Thank you. What thank you guys. He works in mysterious ways.
He does. He does. Yeah, he does. He does.
We'll take it. Thank you. Thank you all. It's always, that's a fun award to give.
It's an honor.
Couple of things to update you on. Eddie has told me that our Royal Spring Project, Royal Spring Park project is completed. It's been backfilled and a little bit of grass started, so hopefully we can now see that those sinkholes and that subsidence end, and then we can confidently go ahead and dredge out the channel and begin some other nice repairs in the park. If you've looked down East Court Street here beside City Hall, you'll see that project is underway, fixing the crack in the wall. They've had that blocked up just as completely as it can be blocked. Also, just to report to you, we had talked about the tire event at the state road garage down on Matic Street, and it was open for three days for people to get rid of old tires. They collected 14,500...
Good night.
Wow. Serious? Wow.
This is impressive. This is just resident, right? Or anybody?
It's just stunning how effective these programs can be.
Very helpful for the community.
Yeah. Yeah. That's a lot of mosquito greening ground.
Water and settling in rubber.
Got us away. Had a great, it was a little bit chilly, but it had a great fire parade Saturday, and a number of the council members were there. Some rode and some walked.
Some ran.
Some ran.
Yeah, I ran.
Good time was had by all.
I couldn't walk as fast as the fire truck.
We've already talked a little bit about some of the events on Saturday, and we know it's a busy day, given, given the benefit for Deputy Morales and then going into the Thriller event. But earlier in the day, there's also going to be a pretty significant event in front of the sheriff's office. There's a big motorcycle ride, I think they're calling it a poker run, for a benefit for Deputy Morales. The thing is going to start, they're going to line up and start the ride at Georgetown Community Hospital, where they'll have breakfast and some fellowship before the ride heads out. The halfway point on the ride, as Sheriff Hampton described it for me today, is back here in Georgetown between 1:00 and 1:30 in front of the sheriff's office, where we think there'll be a huge assembly of motorcycles in this event for Jamie. The action that we would like for you to take is, there's no way to do this and keep it private, so I just have to ask you in public. We're going to have an unveiling that day at the motorcycle return to the sheriff's office, where we're going to unveil new street signs along North Hamilton, at the intersection of North Hamilton and what is now Oregon, and between... Mulberry. And what is now Oregon. And what we'd like to ask the council tonight is to give us approval to rename Oregon Street Morales Way.
Excellent.
That'd be a great idea.
Love that.
I think that's an awesome idea, Mayor.
Well done.
Very well done.
You know, you don't realize what kind of community you live in until people come together the way this community has.
Yep.
This is probably one of the best communities you can live in the state of Kentucky. I honestly believe that. Caring, loving community.
This is a mutual effort with Deputy Hampton. Robert Bruin will have, at your direction, will have new signs made, so they're freshly refurbished and as nice as they can be. We're going to replace the stop signs at both intersections, so they're as clean and bright as they can be, and they'll be draped, and then Saturday afternoon, they'll be undraped.
What time is the breakfast at the hospital where it begins? About what time do you know?
I don't know.
I thought I missed that. Okay.
I didn't, I didn't say what time it is.
You said 1:00 to 1:30 in front of the sheriff's.
1:00 to 1:30 in front of the sheriff's office, and we'd like to thank Sheriff Hampton for, for working with us on this.
We'll probably get that information from the sheriff and when it... Starting at the hospital. Get a map for the ride.
We, we'll get that and email it to the council.
Okay. Thank you.
And News Graphic may have information about the ride as well, so...
Thank you.
Do you need official, as official, for that? I mean, we're all in agreement, but do you need an official vote for change?
Yes, we...
I have a motion.
We have a motion?
Still a second.
And a second?
You were the motion. No. You don't matter. You put Karen as the motion. It don't matter.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
I actually asked Andrew today, I know the council's feelings on this, and I said, "Andrew, is it legal for us to accept a motion from the whole council and then accept a second from the whole council?" He said, "No, can't do that." But we knew the sentiment of the council would be there, so we'll let public courts continue with their work on...
That's a great idea, Mayor.
Let's see. And that completes my mayor's comments. Item seven on the agenda. Chase, G D B S S.
Thank you, Mayor. Georgetown Municipal has three purchase orders and two price contracts for your consideration tonight. If you'd allow me, I'll run through the purchase orders real quick and answer any questions, then I'll, I'll go through the contracts. First purchase order is for Conhurst, Conhurst Construction, and this is for a change order on our Bluegrass RV project where we're eliminating a pump station with a gravity sewer. The second line item for $30,800, that's the only part we're paying a portion of. The rest of the $55,800 is a pass-through cost to our partner, Bluegrass RV, as they requested this change order. We're just funding part of it. The two-thirds that we're responsible for is something that we missed in our original quantity takeoff in the bid. So, just Georgetown Municipal's portion of this PO, this change order is $20,452. Second purchase order is for Derringer Excavating, and that's in the amount of $11,820, and this is for rebuilding our road at the Pleasant Valley Pump Station. As I've researched back the history of this, during the development, the access road to our pump station has been washed out with stormwater runoff, and we're going back and forth on who is responsible for replacing that road, but for some time, our collection staff has not had any access to that pump station. They can't get equipment in there, so we're going to go ahead and fix it, and then we'll sort out who's responsible later, but right now, we need to get a road so we have access. That's what this purchase order is for. Final purchase order is with Jave LLC. That's the contractor that's working on our operations center. During the excavation process, they encountered unsuitable fill that was not discovered during geotechnical investigation. They gave us a quote for what, what that, removing that fill was going to cost, and our design engineer verified that with a survey and said that it was right on the money. The two quotes came in, and that was $22,289.25 for that purchase order. So, I'd ask for your consideration. I can answer any questions on those three.
Motion, I'll make a, for all three of them.
Okay. Motion's been made and seconded. We've given Chase a benefit of letting us consider multiple purchase orders with one vote. We punished him for a while, making him do individual love to everyone, but he's...
He's caught on, Mayor.
Nice to turn screws on.
Okay. The motion's been made and seconded. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
And we have two, two contracts for consideration. I believe they were in the board packet.
The packet, but they're not on the agenda, sorry.
She was, she was confused because I actually sent my, my items in on time this, this week or last week, instead of a couple of days late, so... First, we have our annual chemical bid recommendation. These, this is a unit price contract where we put in all the chemicals that we need for both water treatment and wastewater treatment, and we have four vendors that we will be awarding unit price contracts. And you see their prices there. We also have the increase and decreases in prices from last year's contract. We were, we were satisfied with all those prices and plan to award those unit price contracts.
Interesting, Chase, some of these actually went down.
Yes, sir.
Some went up substantially.
Yes, sir.
Make a motion, Mayor.
Thank you.
I'll second.
If there are no questions for Chase, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Second contract tonight, we had an unexpected retirement recently, and that was our lab supervisor. He does all the testing, did all the testing for all three wastewater treatment plants. While we're searching for his replacement, we have contacted and received quotes from three laboratories that we've worked with in the past, just for our weekly testing that we need on influent and effluent of our treatment plants, and we received those weekly prices, which were actually very favorable to look at continuing to outsource these testing, but these tests, but we are going to award price contracts to these three. Obviously, we will use the lowest price, which is Pace Analytical, unless for some reason they are busy, they're swamped, and they can't get to us. We want to have backup since we have to do these tests and report these to regulatory authorities on a weekly basis, so we would just ask for your consideration of approving these three quotes and entering into contract with these three companies.
I'll make a motion.
Motion's been made and seconded. There are no questions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Thank you.
Thank you, Chase. Let's see. Under the city attorney, we have a resolution approving the sale of land at Lanes Run Business Park. Jack?
Good evening. Good evening.
Good evening. We like it. We like it when you have visuals.
Thank you.
I like that.
Yeah, Jack, that's a little bit like saying, "The grass is green, the sky is blue. I have maps."
Oh, no.
Always a pleasure to come to city council with a, with a client and a contract, for a lot of different reasons, a lot of different reasons. I've already submitted to the mayor a contract along with an earnings check for 6.3 acres in Lanes Run Business Park. The contract is with Crew LLC, which is a LLC off of DNT Electric. With me tonight are Chastity and Darrell Wooton, who are the owners of DNT Electric. So, without me standing here and talking and talking and talking, let me introduce Darrell to you, and he'll explain exactly what DNT does, and he will also explain what our vision is for the 6.3 acres at Lanes Run. Darrell?
Thank you, Jack. Thank you, council. We moved to Georgetown maybe five or six years ago as a contractor. Since we've been here, we've watched our business grow. We've got our Toyota vendor number. We're selling directly to them now, and we rapidly outgrew our space, but just in searching around town trying to find a space that suited us, there wasn't...
Thank you, Chase. Let's see, under the city attorney, we have a resolution approving the sale of land at Lanes Run Business Park. Jack?
Good evening. Good evening.
Good evening. We like it. We like it when you have visuals.
Jack, that's a little bit like saying, "The grass is green, the sky is blue. I have maps."
Oh, no.
Always a pleasure. Come to city council with a client and a contract. For a lot of different reasons, a lot of different reasons. I've already submitted to the mayor a contract along with an earnings check for 6.3 acres in Lanes Run Business Park. The contract is with Crewe LLC, which is a LLC off of D N T Electric. With me tonight are Chastity and Darrell Wooton, who are the owners of D N T Electric. So without me standing here and talking and talking and talking, let me introduce Darrell to you, and he will explain exactly what D N T does. And he will also explain what our vision is for the 6.3 acres at Lanes Run. Darrell?
Thank you, Jack. Thank you, council. We moved to Georgetown maybe five or six years ago as a contractor. Since we've been here, we've watched our business grow. We've got our Toyota vendor number. We're selling directly to them now. And we rapidly outgrew our space, but just in searching around town, trying to find a space that suited us, there wasn't that, what I'm going to call the sweet spot right there in the middle. So you've got these big facilities around town, and then you've got where we are. We're off Dela Plain now on Supply Court. And we just, we rapidly outgrew it. And we felt like there was a need in town for, you know, 20,000, 30,000 square foot down. So what we've designed is a, what we're calling a multi-suite condo that Jack really likes. So it's going to have the Creiform effect on the front. We want to dress it out nice. It's going to be brick. It'll still, I think, for the most part, across the rear, it'll be metal with dock doors, receiving, shipping. But then, as far as what we do, I mean, we're electrical contractor at heart. I've been wiring probably since I was about three. And like I said, as it grew, we're getting into more automation, control panel building, machine building. We're trying to get in it, get a stronger foothold at Toyota. We're already selling them control panels, different vision systems, measurement systems. We're adding to that conveyance, things like that, where we've got to have more room. And I believe that there's a market for that, to bring people in like us, you know, robotics engineers. We've talked to a fellow, and he actually works at Toyota. And on side, he wants to start a crankshaft business where he's going to turn crankshafts and even design his own. And I think there's a lot of opportunity out there at the business park. It's a good location. And then I think, like he said, there's people coming to town that they're wanting to grow their business like us. And until they can afford to build their own building, it's a good, small unit. Get in there, and if you need multiple units, you need more space, we just take a wall down, and it's there. We're bringing in the higher voltages. We're going to try to bring in more water. The kind of folks in town will let us. Gas, so there's not much that you couldn't do out of these suites. Where we're at now, we're very limited by voltage and things that are available. When we build out there, we really want to create something. If somebody, you know, wanted to do something with plastics or metal or steel, we can suit that.
The first kind of... ...have is a benchmark, Darrell, Chastity, is in Louisville. And that's kind of what, that's what he means by, "It looks like Creiform." Those of you that went to the groundbreaking, well, ribbon, you know, the whole thing at Creiform, then you know it's a quality building. I think the second page is the actual property and the reason, those are the three buildings that they're looking to do. And obviously, they'll start with the first one at the top. That'll be the first one, and then they'll proceed as they go on through. The 6.3 acres is due east of Commonwealth Tool and Machines facility, which now, if you've been out there, is already under construction. Just for the purpose of understanding between phase one and phase two, this is like Commonwealth Tool and Machine. Northern half, phase one. Bottom half, phase two. Phase two is under construction, but everything can come from the north to the south. So that's why we want to build from the first building from the north. Infrastructure's already there. Come off the cul-de-sac, and then we just continue to build. And by the time phase two is complete, they'll be in the process of moving forward. The last sheet, probably shouldn't have showed you that anyway, but that's kind of their preliminary development plan, which will have additional landscaping, side elevations, et cetera, that'll go along with that. The beauty, again, I want to reemphasize what Darrell said. Not only are they an existing company in our community, but this is exactly what we want to do. We want to build, expand out those existing companies. Now, I think against locations, we love them. Love them to death. But still, this is where we want to build our base, continue to build a base. And you've heard what he does, pretty sophisticated things. If you want, we can take any questions you may have.
It's a great concept and a great need, a need in the community.
Significant need.
Yeah.
Quick question, Darrell, or Jack, did you say that the spaces would be condoed? I know I heard that term, so...
We came up with multi-suite condos because we like that a whole lot better than saying we're just going to get a 1,500 square foot space, period.
But can they be sold off to individuals? Can they be actually...
Not individually. You know, the plan now is to keep it in the family.
Okay. So they'll all be leased essentially?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
I'm not saying we couldn't sell all of them to somebody in the future.
Sure, sure, but not individually?
Yeah.
Okay.
And that keeps, it gives us the ability to, you know, if someone needs 2,400 square feet, you throw a wall up. 24,000, you take down four floors.
And they'll look pretty similar to what you've given us here?
I do not like the stucco, but they'll look very similar to that. We're thinking all brick. We're probably going to lose the awning, do more glass. But it's, we don't like the, we do not like the orange that Creiform has. I think it'll be mama's choice on the brick, but...
He rules.
But beyond that, it's going to be, I think it's going to have an office kind of look to it. And we're going to build them 20 feet tall, so if someone did want to come in and do two floors, they could do that. Two floors with a big bay behind it, you can do that.
Okay.
But you've raised a very interesting question because you don't have, there are a number of contingencies in the contract. One of the critical contingencies is this, that the uses have to be BP1, which is what the zoning is. If the less, if the owner sells property, then the authority has the right, that's a bad term, has the ability to go and make sure that whomever the next owner is going to be, if they sell, also is going to have to meet BP1 requirements. That's in the contract. We want to make sure we're protected all the way through.
Great.
And I would just point out that as per our agreement with the debt on phase one of the park, whatever portion of this sale lies in phase one will go toward our debt. So we continue to chip away at that number.
Motion.
Thank you.
Second.
Second, thank you. Any further questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Congratulations.
Jack, would you give copy of this to Mike? I thought Mike might want, as the news graphic being here. Item 8B, under city attorney, is a resolution approving the EMA interlocal agreement. You recall, this is just purely housekeeping. It's one that we overlooked previously. Nothing changed in the interlocal, but we need to get it through the process.
It did come unanimously recommended out of the interlocal committee, and this supports our passing the resolution.
Motion, Mayor.
Second, Mayor.
Made and seconded. Thank you. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Good. Under city engineer, and Eddie is not here tonight, I thought these were pretty self-explanatory. If you'll turn over to, we have municipal order approving change order for Lanes Run Business Park. And these are two very specific expenses. The first is $71,750 to let us avoid needing an easement. We are going slightly around a problem to avoid an easement. The reason for the cost is because to do this, from a technical point of view, the line has to go very deep. So it's just kind of an expensive fix, but it lets us move forward without any questions and something we can absolutely do. The second part of the change order is $115,490. And this builds the sewer line, fills in the gap between our project and Barclay Estates, which is where we finally hook onto. I asked Eddie today, Chase, to get with you to discuss the possibility of a privilege fee agreement so that if someone in the future develops that property, that we might have an opportunity to recover some of our cost. It's just...
That entire area is already in privilege fee, 17, I believe, but we can look if there's any way that that can revise or anything.
Okay. Those are the two necessary changes that let us solve any sewage capacity issue that we had for our expansion of the business park. It also, after we make these change orders, still leaves a contingency budget of over $206,000. Motion. Thank you.
Second. He was looking at it like, "I know."
Either one of us.
I feel like I'm always constantly...
I know, he too.
Are we, are we gonna, are we gonna, is that part of the recouping some of the cost in with the privilege fee? Is that part of...
That's what I want to explore. I didn't say that as a definite because I'm not sure we can deliver on that. But I did ask Eddie to start that conversation with Chase.
Whether it's a new privilege fee or part of an existing one?
I just have to look at how that agreement is...
Rolled up.
Because that entire, the business park is all part of, it's 16 or 17.
Okay.
I'll work with Eddie on that, and we'll see if we can...
I think in a very, very preliminary stage of the project, there was an expectation that this property might have already developed, and the sewer line would be there. The reality is that hadn't happened. We're building Business Park, so we've got to do it. And if we can do that, recover some costs in the future, I just wanted to explore that. Motion's been made and seconded. Any questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Thank you, Jack. Okay, next one, a big one for us to move forward on, is the municipal order approving a contract to repair the cemetery wall. We've been around the barn twice on this. We got an original bid to do the repairs. That was just higher than we wanted to spend on the repairs. We know we have to make this appearance okay, and we have to make it safe, but we wanted to do it at some reasonable cost. They priced, one of the big variables that we discussed leaving in the contract to bring you tonight or taking out was the removal of the rear sidewalk. That's a fairly expensive part of this, and it really doesn't affect what we're doing with the wall. But they've assured us, from an engineering perspective, that if we don't take out the rear sidewalk, we're going to continue to have drainage problems that will undermine any repair we make. And that when we do the big fix that the council would like to do at some point in the future, we're going to have to take out that sidewalk and put this drainage in. So we might as well do it as a part of our temporary repair. It also includes pressure washing the fence, and we had a photograph. We can send you that photograph tomorrow. They cleaned one block, and it was remarkable how much lighter it came. And that'll also help with the loosening mortar, so when they tuck point areas, it'll be more sound. So the contract that we bring you tonight is...
This is the M O. She redid it to add the $3,000.
Okay. $65,475. That's a little more than we hoped this temporary repair would cost. Given that we get some benefit from the tearing out the rear, the back sidewalk and the drainage, it gets it down closer to the $20,000 or $25,000 that we thought these temporary repairs might cost.
Mayor, what will, what would it look like when they're done with the pressure washing or tuck pointing or whatever? Would it be somewhat consistent from one end to the other?
It'd be as consistent as they can make it. There may be some slight color variations. Who's got that picture?
I don't have it.
Eddie has it.
Who showed it?
Eddie, on his phone.
Oh, Eddie showed it to me, okay.
One of the, another reason why it's slightly higher is they're actually going to have the blocks recast to match. You know, originally, they thought they could just go buy one off the shelf somewhere, but we didn't think that would look right. So, I mean, when you combine those new blocks that have to be cast and having them cleaned and tuck pointing end to end, I mean, that cost makes sense. Plus, they're going to shore up the part that's kind of starting to lean. And I think there might be some structural places where they rebar and concrete, things like that.
It's pricey, but it's the best, the best short...
Not as pricey.
It's not a million dollars.
$900,000.
The other thing is too, the water thing in the back that you're talking about, you know?
Yeah. It's the drainage. And we may be very pleasantly surprised with the appearance of the repair.
Maybe we'll be.
But this is our recommendation.
I'll make a motion, Mayor.
So it's...
I'll second.
No, go ahead, somebody make a second. Then I'll ask a question.
Yes, ma'am.
It says you'll still have a little lean to it after they remove and put the new split-face blocks on it? It will still have a little lean to it?
Let me find out how much.
It says, that's on the section that it says that they're going to take out, which, I'd like to see that block because that's a big, there's a couple of big hoes in there that they're putting, they're making new block out of that, right?
They're going to reface where it's kind of chipped away.
But it still says to have a lean to it and tuck pointing. How long are they guaranteeing the tuck point?
That I don't know.
I have no idea how long they guarantee tuck pointing.
Sometimes, of course, I know they're trying to get the sidewalk behind it to get the moisture off of it. So, but sometimes, have they given you kind of a guarantee on the wall once they fix it? How long they think it'll be until it needs to be redone again, or sections of it redone?
Off the top of my head, I do not. But we can inquire.
I think it might be a good idea to nail a little bit of what the guarantee, it's kind of like the pool up here. If we hadn't gotten a guarantee escrow on the pool, we would have been out, I mean, we made negotiation, but we would have been out all that money. And if there's no guarantee, it could crumble, a new section of it could crumble next year. And so then you're back to $62,000 again, and then at that point, we should have just done the new wall, so...
Well, we can spend $62,000 about 15 different times before we get to a million dollars.
But we may have to. So if I want a guarantee, to know that we don't have to do that.
I'd be glad to talk to them about a guarantee. I don't know that a broken wall, we'll ask how much guarantee they'll give. I've never heard of a guarantee on tuck pointing, frankly.
Don't know. But I...
We know this will be a temporary repair. There's just no other way to...
Even that's what I'd like to know. It's a temporary repair. Understand that. How long are we anticipating this being a temporary repair? Because if it's a year, two years, then maybe we should go on and make the investment. But if it's going to be there, and they're thinking it's going to be there 10 years, then okay, we're good. I'd just like to know what they feel of the quality of the wall after they do the work, what kind of longevity we have or don't have with the wall.
I think the discussions have been, not in terms of a guarantee, but in terms of what is expected from the wall, we're clearly looking for something that's going to last eight, 10 years.
Have they said that?
That's the discussions we've had with them. I don't have that in the form of a guarantee, but I see no sense in approaching a repair if we don't have an expectation that it's going to last eight or 10 years. Happy to ask about the guarantee, but certainly that's the expectation.
How long ago was the cemetery wall built? Do you have any idea?
Worth thinking of. At least a hundred.
At least a hundred.
So you don't think that there's any kind of historic tax credit that's available or anything? I think if they're like over 50 years old or something. Kitty told me this, you know, she's knowledgeable. It'd be something to ask, especially if we're going to restore it back to about what it looks like. Mike a check, and I don't mind asking her.
But really, we're talking about 40-something thousand, right? 43,000 roughly in terms of actual repair? Because some of it's got to be done anyway, like you were saying. The sidewalk and the rock. So in my mind, if we got a few years out of it, I'm okay with it. I understand what Karen's saying.
Then you can just save money in the budget for later.
I'll be glad to pose the question and see what kind of guarantee we can get. I'd kind of like to turn them loose to start the work. We've got, I think, is it a three-week gap between this meeting and the next one?
Yes.
It's going to be getting cold, too.
Did they give you a timeframe by any chance? I mean, I know it's kind of contingent on weather, but it works better when it's warm.
Adam was the primary contact as far as it did.
I think it's in the contract.
So is there a timeframe that you'd be comfortable with if we went on and proceeded tonight? If it was beyond four years or five years? Well, it's been done by March. Okay.
So they're going to start on it immediately? Depends on... Depends on the weather. This is a, this is a bad time of the year to start, to start working with, with that, when it could be cold.
We'll do, we'll do the council's pleasure.
I'd, I'd just like to have information, but we need to, we need to fix a wall regardless.
We have a motion in a second to accept the contract.
I need a second.
Yeah.
Yeah, I do.
Mayor, can I just also say that Kitty told me that you only have to spend by about $20,000 to be eligible for some tax credits, so I would definitely look into it.
Okay, we'll do that for sure.
That would fit that criteria.
We, we, we have been having some of the same conversations about tax credits for City Hall.
Yeah.
And it's, it's a little bit difficult for government entities to get the tax credits. We'll be glad to check with them. I'm going to go ahead and call for a vote.
Well, you could have put in there, contend you at least four or five-year warranty on the work.
I think it needs some kind of warranty on, on...
I'd say once, Utah brick and stuff, it lasts a pretty good long time.
Most of the time, yes.
Yeah, I mean, you, you work on a house, mortar, brick loose.
I would think that they'll probably give you some kind of a warranty for their work performance or something like that, for two years, something like that.
No warranty?
No warranty.
But we can ask.
Would you prefer this come back to you in two weeks, three weeks?
I would, but that's up to you all, isn't it?
Well...
If this gets approved tonight, is the work going to start immediately?
I don't know, Mark. But I don't know.
I think a substantial part of the work is removing the sidewalk. Well, they've got to do, they've got to remove the sidewalk, but it's going to take them some time to get samples and have them made and, you know, prepare the site and I don't know whether it starts tomorrow, but I think theoretically, there's a lot of preparation work before you will actually see them, you know, there mortaring and things like that. I do think that they intend to pressure wash early because that's the point, is to get exposed what is kind of loosened up and really needs to be fixed. I would assume they start pretty quickly.
Do we have more than one vendor bid? Or was Dixie the only one that did bid?
We had, we had all one, right?
There was a sole bidder.
Sole bidder.
They were also awarded the contract for work for Ward Hall. It's the same company.
When we actually reached out, we had, we had been contacted by a number of masons who came to see us and said, hey, we are interested in doing this wall for you. So we said, great, give us your contact information and we bid it out, we'll send it to you. And we did. And they didn't bid and it's frustrating.
Well, it's probably not going to be an easy, I'm not overly surprised at the price, to be honest with you, because I don't think it's going to be an easy, an easy wall to do. That's why I really like to know if they'll back up any of their, any of their work that they're going to do because they make, of course, it seems like if they're working for Ward Hall, they know what they're doing.
Mm-hmm.
That gives me a little more faith in them, but it's, they go up there and start with that wall, I'm sure more of it's going to decay as they're working on it. So those are kind of things with historical fences, walls, mortar, to make sure that we're covered if any of that starts to happen.
Ask them to warrant the workmanship of their product, you know, the fix that they make and the mortar joints that they do and the tuck pointing, they're going to say yes. If you want them to mortar or to, to warranty that nothing is going to happen to that wall, I don't think they'll do it because that's a hundred-year-old wall.
Exactly.
Yeah, they're dealing with...
Exactly.
Yeah.
And that, that I understand. I'm sure they have insurance, so if they go in there and the whole wall explodes on them, then, so. But I'd just like to know a little bit more about what they're going to back up with the wall.
It does, Tracy just pointed out, line three, it talks about a one-year, one-year after installation.
Is there a one-year work to ship?
Yeah.
That sounds about, about right.
You know, one thing...
That's our standard contract.
Yeah, the standard deal you're going to get.
Mayor, totally respect where Karen's coming from, I do. Totally respect that. If we decide we want to hold off, that's, that's fine, but I feel comfortable with, especially after what David just read.
Yeah, that's...
I'm okay with voting tonight.
I'm going to go ahead and call the questions if we can do it with roll call vote, please.
Mr. Thompson?
Yes.
Mrs. Tackett?
Yes.
Mr. Joe Walter?
Yes.
Mrs. Tinglestein?
No, I'd like to have more information.
Mr. Lesby?
Yes.
Mrs. Singer-Erdley?
Yes.
Mrs. Butcher-Comway?
Yes.
Mr. Bradley?
Yes.
Thank you. Still a good question, we're still...
Thank you.
And I'll bring you back the answer.
Excellent.
Let's see, item 10 on your agenda is the quarterly financial report. Mike, you got a copy of that?
There's an extra copy up there for him.
We do have this, take this back.
Alrighty then.
Good evening. Well, unfortunately, the report for the first quarter of the year is never that exciting because usually by the time I get up here, not, all the money hasn't come in, so we're going to look at the first quarter and then I'm going to touch base just on exactly where we ended June 30 because obviously I have a little more information on that since the last time I was up here, so. Payroll taxes, let's look first at that and let's touch briefly on June 30, 2018. You can see that we ended the year with 12.9 million on a budget of 11 million. And then, just to give you some perspective, the incentive that we paid out on that, remember it falls on their fiscal year, not our fiscal year, as far as the 2.5 million limit. So the incentive was 2,626,210. So if you added that back in, we actually would have had total revenue of 15.6 million. One of the key things I wanted you to look at is for the first quarter of this year, I don't have data for September yet due to the timing of when the returns come into the revenue commission and they remit to us. But if you'll look at July, it looks quite low compared to our historical data, 481,000 and change. I had to think about that for a minute, but I believe what happened here in the city has happened in other entities, especially manufacturing businesses. When you're on a bi-weekly payroll, you have two months out of the year, you get three paychecks. Typically, that falls in July and August, December and January. This year's an odd year. The three payrolls fell in June and November. So if you look at June of 2018, you'll see historically, it's been 1.1, 1.1, 1.2, all of a sudden, it was 1.7. So I believe that half a million dollar difference is due to the three payrolls showing up in June. So by the time we get around to November and have three pay, pay periods again, will equal out by the end of the year, but they just fell a little different this year than they have in the past. So you can see that currently, at 1.399 million, we're at 11% of what we've budgeted this year. Again, just a little behind previous years, but I think it has a lot to do with not having our three payrolls in July and August this time. So that could be a little oddity, we'll keep an eye out for the rest of the year. The next category, net profits. So you can see what I've done, even though I don't have the final audit from the revenue commission, I have a ballpark estimate of what we owe companies who either had credits on their returns that could conceivably ask for refunds or are rolling it over to their next tax period. So I went ahead in June of 18 and backed out the 1,046 that I anticipate will show as rollover for those. So that brings our revenue to approximately 1.5 million and our budget for net profits at the end of last year was 3.5 million. We've been talking that up a little bit, that we, we knew we were going to hit low on that one. Of course, we hit high on payroll taxes, which just about made up for the whole amount. But you'll see in July of 19, hopefully what will happen is we will get to report that credit this year. That's, so I just wanted to show that there. That's traditionally what happens is hopefully when they file returns next year, they will use up that credit. Hopefully, I won't have to reduce that number any. Hopefully, we'll be able to take the revenue for the whole thing, but I wanted to show you that. And year-to-date, true revenue and receipts that have come in for net profits has been 43,500, which is a little bit less than what we've typically had at this point in the year, but I know we've had some refund checks we've had to write and some other things, so I think that's affected it just a little bit. So we'll keep an eye on that, but assuming we get to...
Payroll taxes predictable. Net profits taxes as much art as it is science.
Yeah, very much so.
Yes.
Very much.
But Stacy gives us as, as good a look at it as we can to understand it.
So if we get to recognize all of that credit, then we would be at about 31% of our revenue for the year. Insurance premium tax, again, this one we can, I think you saw most of this one I reported on the June 30 quarter, but we ended the year with 2,878,000. We had budgeted 2,450,000, so we ended about 428,000 over budget. Those returns are not due until October 31st, so we haven't received any of those yet, very few. So we had a few refunds, that's why you see the negative numbers in August and September because I believe the companies have actually started to learn that they can send letters and request, because some of them have the credit and they just roll it over quarter after quarter and they've finally realized they can send that in and request a refund from us if they are no longer reporting taxes with us. Property tax collections, obviously, we have not hit our busy season yet, so we had pretty close to 100% collections last year and so far this year, we've brought in 9,700, but that will all change next quarter, obviously.
I think there, there were people coming into your office the day after you mailed them. It was just amazing to see folks coming to City Hall. To the next day.
And then finally, alcoholic beverage, regulatory fees. You can see that we ended last year with a million eight and have incomplete data for the first quarter so far. People have turned in returns to the tune of 71,000, but those are also due October 31st and we budgeted 980,000 this year, so take a look at that. Any questions about anything?
Good so far.
Good job, Stacy.
Yeah, I got scared at first when I looked at July and then I remembered the third payroll landed in June this year and I did confirm with somebody that certain companies are on the same schedule as us, so we got our third paycheck in June, they did too, so that's what made...
Nice little bit of detective work.
Yeah, really.
Yeah, really.
Pretty easy to text a coworker. Thank you all.
Thanks, Stacy. Thanks for all your hard work.
Under item 11, Public Works, municipal order approving a new hook lift systems that we've had such success with, this will be a dump body, a salt spreader, a utility bed, a flat bed. The truck is already ordered and I think it will be in through our enterprise lease program and it will be in in February or March.
I'll make a motion.
Thank you.
Be glad to.
And seconded. If there are no questions about that, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Wow, 704.
Yeah.
And all as well.
And all as well.
Actually, we have a surprise.
We do have a surprise.
Good surprise, though.
But it'll be a short...
A short surprise.
Happy, happy surprise.
No singing and dancing, but...
Phew. Good, no. Oh, come on. Let's cut a rug.
Okay.
She's looking at me. Polly and Mark and I all attended the Scott County Conservation Dinner on October 17th. It was the 37th Harvest Day banquet celebration. And unbeknownst to us, the Conservation Board awarded the recycle center with a plaque. And when it was over, nobody was there to accept it and I don't think they let Robert know about it and they asked me, since I was on Public Works, if I could take it and bring it to you all tonight. And you want to read it?
Okay, alrighty. Scott County Conservation District's Environmental Award presented to the Georgetown-Scott County Recycling Center in recognition of your efforts to protect our natural resources through the recycling center's outreach to the community to recycle paper, cardboard, plastics and other items to help reduce the volume going to the landfill. Scott County Conservation District, 37th Harvest Day, October 17th, 2018. Very good. So that is it.
We'll do another picture.
No, we're just going to give you the flag.
What? This is really special for me.
It was us, Mark and Pete taking the thing.
Dory's going to take a picture. Get up there, Mark.
Come up here.
Come on, Mark.
Marvin, you're on the...
Mark, 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 Mark.
Go ahead, go ahead, go ahead, go ahead.
Come on, Mayor.
You take my spot, Mayor.
It's Marvin or Mark?
You got the most spot.
Mark was there at the dinner.
And he's in the picture accepting it at the dinner.
Marvin's on the Public Works, but we didn't know we were going to get it.
No, no, I think, actually, king percentage to us.
David, you getting up there?
Nobody at City Hall and nobody with Public Works was notified.
No.
I know, that's what they told us, that's what they told us.
We were a little surprised. I didn't know we'd received an award until...
That's what they told us, so...
That's how you keep a secret, Mayor.
Well, we had asked Robert to be here, but he couldn't be here.
Yeah.
So, yeah, yeah, we had asked him, so...
Y'all act like you like each other, come on. Cheeseburger and french fries. Hi, Bill. Good, how about you?
Thank you.
Oh, Lordy.
Good job, Mayor.
You'll have to create a meeting.
There we are.
This is a joint agency?
Yeah, it is.
That county.
We, we share this.
Share it with the county.
County. He said, Mr. Tingle said it should have said Scott County and Georgetown.
Yeah, Georgetown, Scott County, yeah.
Both of them, but it...
He had said it should have said that, but...
Recycle Center.
Yeah.
Anything else, Mary?
Yep.
Actually, I do, and it's kind of off-subject, but anyhow, most of you all know Bonnie Newville. She's my cousin and an icon. She fell last Thursday after the dinner and is in the hospital and had a hip replacement and knee replacement and she's, could use a lot of good thoughts and prayers and good vibes in her way, so I just wanted to announce that.
Yeah, bless your heart.
Yeah.
Say a prayer for her.
I will definitely do that.
She's a good, good lady, that's it.
I'm just going to wish every one of us that's run for election this year the best of luck. Good councilwork for, Mayor, great job. And I need to be at a meeting at 7 o'clock, so I would like to be excused, please.
You are excused, thank you.
Oh.
Great.
Oh, I can't wait till it gets to me because I was going to talk about Marvin.
Oh, you're working over there. You better get up, you better get up there.
I had a little paco issue, but I already sent you a picture of it, it's so pretty and, and I'm good.
All right.
And I do wish everybody luck, too. We don't get to see each other till after, after the, so good luck there.
Good luck to everybody.
Just a little shout out to Robert at Public Works, we were walking down the street and saw where the storm drain was caving in, the road was caving in, I took a picture of it, sent it to him, next day they were out there working on it.
Oh, Robert, he's on it.
He's on it.
He's a good man.
He is.
Yeah, it, it, it really makes a difference when you've got somebody like Robert in that row.
He does.
Martin? If there's nothing else, come for the council, we will stand adjourned.
Good.
Thank you.